Okay. Good morning. Would like to call to order this meeting of Cabarrus County Commissioners. I think I probably should label that special meeting. At our last meeting, we... Why am I not grabbing the term?
Recession.
Recession. We did not adjourn. We recessed until this meeting. So, we appreciate everybody being here this morning. Congratulations to Representative Pittman on his reelection and to Representative Johnson, if she joins us, and congratulations to Representative Ford for being unopposed in the primary. I'm sure you were disappointed about that, but you looked like you got through it okay. So, it's been a busy week for everybody, so we especially appreciate y'all joining us this morning. You know, and you have all joined us for this type of meeting in the past, and of course, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners puts together a legislative agenda... Oh, I forgot. And welcome Representative Hartzell, who is on the electronic box, Senator Hartzell in the middle of the room. So, we're glad you joined us as well.
(Inaudible).
We do have the legislative agenda that the Association puts together each year, and so throughout the state, each county tries to have a meeting with their delegation to talk about these issues, to find out where you stand on it, and to present our point of view. The name that they have given that was "Meeting in a Box" a number of years ago, and I think they've tried to get away from that, but it hadn't worked with us. We still have that printed on our information. But, we do have another meeting that's going to occur in this room, so we've got a pretty hard stop at 9:00, so we need to do what we can do in one hour and let everybody get on with their day. All of you have a book in front of you that, in the very front, has basically three goals that the Association has set for the short session. The first one of those being seek legislation to repeal the statutory authority under North Carolina General Statute 115(c)-431(c) that allows local school boards to file suit against a county board of commissioners over county appropriations for education. I'm sure this is something that all of you are familiar with. It's particularly problematic for counties. We had that situation to occur here in Cabarrus County year before last. It is a process that... This is my personal evaluation of our situation here. We invested a great deal of time in that process, paid a great deal of attorney fees on both sides of the issue, and then, at the end of the day, we did exactly what we were going to do anyway. We just had the conversation. I don't think it resulted in any benefit to either side of that issue. Commissioners, if y'all have anything to add to that, I know Commissioner Shue, at that time, was still on the school board, so he was on the opposite side of that issue. You might have something to...
Well, truthfully, Mr. Chairman, I tried to steer the school board away from that because I felt like that they were moving rather fast and didn't really give enough time to work things out. And I'm the kind of person that believes that you can work most anything out if you'll sit down and talk about it. And that had not really happened in detail. But, you're right, though. The county commission done what it was going to do anyway, and had they waited on the lawsuit, then all those legal fees could have been spared for both the county and for the school system. So, I think that, you know, having it where the school boards can't come back and sue the counties for appropriations is a good thing. And like I say, I served 12 years on the school board, and I know what goes on there, and I know what goes on here. Not only that, but I know the kind of people that we're working with. If it can be done, we're going to try to do it. And if it can't be done, then fussing and fighting's not going to make it happen. So, that's just the way I look at it.
Right. We're very fortunate here in Cabarrus County. Our current relationship with the school board is a good one. I think we are communicating well with each other, so I don't feel that it's as big an issue for us as it may have been in the past. Commissioner Minnott?
The only thing that I think I'd like to hear from everybody is what is the flip side of this? We do have good relationships now with the school board, and we do want to work things out, as Lynn has said, but there are times, and there have been in the past, where that's just a roadblock. And so, what do you... There are counties... And this is not just for our county, this is for everybody's county. So, what do the counties do that don't have those good relationships? And they actually get up to a point where they're just not getting the issues resolved and the needs are not being met. So, what's the flip side to that? What's the alternative to their being allowed to sue? Forced arbitration or... I don't know. I'm just throwing that out.
Well, certainly, from my perspective, you would hope that if...
One or the other may not be the answer.
If commissioners in a county were not taking care of the needs of their school system, we would hope that the voters would replace them. But, that's just my opinion. Representative Pittman, do you have thoughts on this?
Well, I agree with that. I think, you know, the system of our republic sometimes works slowly, and that's aggravating and frustrating a lot of people, but that's how it works. And I think the idea of one portion of government suing another portion of government just means the taxpayers lose, whichever way it goes.
Yeah. Well, I would certainly agree with that. Carl?
I agree with this legislation. Remember, we ran it a couple of years ago, fell short in the House. It was going to pass in the Senate, and we fell just shy, so we hoped to run it again because I saw it in Rowan two years ago, where they went into arbitration and spent over a half million dollars in attorney's fees, and nothing changed. And that was a half million dollars. Not one brick was laid, not one child was educated. Just half million dollars to two attorneys. And that's sad, and it's happening across the state. And like in Cabarrus and Rowan now, there's a better relationship between the two boards, but, I mean, that can change at a whim of an election. We all know that. So, it is worse in other parts, it is better in other parts of the state. We've all heard the horror stories in Union County, how millions of dollars have been spent going through this. So, I agree with this legislation, and we're going to try again. We fell just short last time, just short.
Great. Well, I appreciate those comments. One thing that I did not mention in our... What we will do with this information is the Association has regional meetings throughout the state where we get together and talk about the results of this meeting, what our representatives had to say about different issues. Fortunately for our region, this year, we will be hosting that meeting here in Cabarrus County on April the...
7/7.
7, yeah. Great. Did you have...
I was just going to ask, when it has failed, for the ones who vote against it, do they... Do we have any reasoning for that? I mean, like, you can sue the county, but it doesn't make millions of dollars for us to give to you, whether you sue or not, there's only the money there that's there. So, I wonder what their point of view is on...
The reason that we heard it, and it was Republicans and Democrats, so it was both sides, for and against. And the number-one thing that they talked about, and it was usually former school board members, that said it, "If we don't have this option, they know they've got us and will never be able to get anything." So... And I'm sure that could be true in one of the 115 systems or several. I don't know. But, that was the number-one reason. "If we don't have this option, you know..." And I mean, it was conservative Republicans, liberal Democrats, they were coming together against this. So, party didn't really matter on this, and it was, like I said, mainly school board, former school board members.
Senator Hartzell, do you have comments on that issue?
I needed to get it off mute so that I could speak.
We're here and here...
I'm in an odd position in that 40 years ago, literally, as counsel for the Cabarrus Board of Education, with Jay Robinson as our superintendent, we did file... It wasn't such a... It wasn't as contentious a proceeding as those that exist today, but I've been involved in that from the other side personally. The process was very different than what it is today. It was a hearing before the clerk of court. Personally, I think that, I mean, the idea of litigation formally is not a good one. I just don't think that's good. But, I think where there are differences, sometimes there needs to be some form of, in a sense, formalized mediation. I don't mean arbitration, I mean mediation, some process that at least formally air the differences in some fashion. But, I mean, I don't have a problem with eliminating litigation, so...
Okay. I think that is just what we're looking for from your opinion on it. Fortunately, I think we've got an environment here where that's not likely to happen in the future, and we've got, on our Board of Commissioners, three former school board members, so they understand both sides of the issue as well. And I think a focus of this board is how do we improve our educational situation here in the county. And a lot of people... We're hearing a lot of comments about school choice. I was surprised at a library board of trustees meeting last night. We had a good deal of discussion about the homeschool community and how much they use the resources in our library. So, we're hitting it from a number of different directions. So, if everybody's okay with that, we'll move on to our next topic. Next item is seek legislation to authorize local option revenue sources already given to any other jurisdiction. And of course, there's a great deal of detail in that. It is my understanding that, on the sales tax situation, which of course was a very hot topic for you guys over the past year with the redistribution plans that were put forward and all the subsequent talks that surrounded that, here in Cabarrus County, back to the education thing again, I think that you're probably all aware that the primary issue for Cabarrus County right now is how we fund our capital needs for school construction. And our school board has brought forth projections and plans based on the growth that's occurred over the past recent years, as well as building permits that have been issued and plans that are on the drawing boards. The figure that they've estimated is 264 million in the next five years, 300 million in the five years that follow that. So, we're looking at... Our school system growth is about a new school per year, and that is new students. I think during the recession, and please correct me if I'm wrong on these numbers because I sometimes get them a little skewed, but I think 700 students a year was their slowest growth year, even during the recession. So, it's been ranging from 700 to 1,000 students per year. And you guys read the newspaper just like we do, and you see the permits that have been issued for new developments over the past few weeks. We're looking at 500 houses here, 400 houses here, certainly in the Harrisburg area, tremendous growth over there, and now we're going down 49. So, it's expanding all over the county, and, you know, that's a blessing and a curse. And the blessing part of it is we're a very desirable place for people to live. You know, I had an opportunity at the voting polls on Tuesday to talk to a number of people that have moved into Cabarrus County, and I said, "So, why'd you choose us?" And tax rate was a big one that was mentioned a number of times. So, a lot of things make us attractive, so we've got to figure out how to pay for these schools. And one of the options that might be available to us is a quarter cent of the sales tax, which I understand has already been authorized, but it is limited for specific purposes, and it goes into some detail on this. But, I think currently, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is it not designated for transportation?
Yeah. The final quarter cent that's out there right now is for transportation only, and what we would ask for and what all of the counties are asking for is just flexibility in the use of it. We're one of the ones that has capped it at 250. So, we're up to 2 and 1/2 now. We're looking for options and future options, as our chairman says, that we're going to need to be funding some schools, and if our operating budget and our natural growth here doesn't keep up, we're going to have to look for alternative ways to fund some of this. So, the two choices are sales tax or property tax, and I think sales tax would be the most advantageous if we have to go that route. We hope we don't have to, but it would be better for us if we had the option and then let the board make that decision and ask them to talk to our public and see which one's the best way to go. But, right now, the rigid or the requirements of what you can and can't spend it on is going to really hold us to only one option if we have to go that way.
Is there a sunset on your quarter cent?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. With tax reform, I'm not sure if this happened. I agree with the option, though. I think the county should have the option. Again, it's like always, there are some counties that have abused it, and I hate to keep bringing up Rowan, but I am familiar with it. They had a quarter cent sales tax that we got approved for new jail, 911. Been going great. So, all of a sudden, the economy got better and a lot more money started coming in. So, now, the current board is deciding to take the extra money and do other things with it, which was not approved by the voters, which was not approved by the commissioners, and it had a sunset when the 911 center and the jail was paid off to go away unless it went back before the voters and they approved it for something else. So, you've got things like that happening that you know and I know, some voters, they don't... They go, "Okay," and some just get really agitated at that because that's not what they were told. But, I do agree with counties having the option of what to do with it. I assume transportation, your vans and buses and roads, anything, transportation. But, you need the option. You're right. You could probably use it more for schools or something else, but...
The previous, the existing quarter cents that was there, it was just the general passing of the quarter cent for revenues, but the board at the time said that they were going to dedicate it to school capital, and that's exactly what it's been going to, to school capital. As you... We've got enough, we're starting three schools this month. That's not even included in the number that they're talking about, the 264 million.
I do agree with the option. I don't know if we can make it happen, though, with tax reform. We'll give it a shot.
All right. Representative Pittman?
I'd rather see it go to education and public transit, to tell you the truth.
You say you'd rather see it go to education?
Yeah, to education instead of public transit, because I'm not a big fan of that anyway, but if y'all need an option to do that, I'm fine with it.
Yeah. And of course, in Cabarrus County, it's probably more significant to us because we are fortunate to have so much retail activity from folks coming in from all parts of the state, certainly with Exit 49, Concord Mills, things that are occurring there. So, for our citizens, that is an attractive alternative as opposed to increasing property taxes. Senator Hartzell, do you have thoughts on that?
Options, I think, are all certainly useful and appropriate, but I should mention that there is a study being undertaken right now, probably a result of which will not come out until something like August, from Program Evaluation Division, looking at school funding formulas anyway, which may or may not... And that's not something that's going to happen or be addressed until a long session. But, I think you... You can't look at these things in a vacuum. You have to look at various alternatives and options that meet local needs, so...
So, Fletcher, the study on school funding formulas, is that in regards to capital construction or just the operational...
It would indirectly impact capital construction.
Uh-huh. Okay. We'll be anxious to learn more about that. So, on this particular issue, until something changes with that study, what would you say your position would be?
Well, I mean, I think it's useful to have options. I mean, the issue is what you do with the results of those options, and Cabarrus County's needs are different from other counties. You can't necessarily funnel things in a particular way, whether it be for education or transportation or various sundry other matters. The... There are other... I think creating the silo for various sundry funding is not a good thing to begin with. I think it's a matter of how you address all these things. Options are useful. Actually, there was some legislation some time ago to give every city or county the option of doing the same thing that any one could do, but that never got anywhere. To address the issue of, you know, kind of some localities have various sundry funding for, I mean, taxation and others that others don't, just to kind of create an equivalency. But, I think that it's very clear that some parts of the state need work schools, some need for... There's some transportation issues, there's several other things.
Correct. Well, thank you. Obviously, that's a story that we talk about quite a bit as all of us, as commissioners, travel. Occasionally, when we go to educational seminars, you know, we sit down at a table, and the first question is, "What's the biggest issue in your county right now?" And most of the time, we can quickly say, "Well, we're trying to figure out how we can pay for the schools that we've got to build and to keep up with the growth that's going on." The person sitting on the other side of the table frequently says, "Gosh, I wish we had that problem. We're trying to figure out which schools to close because our population is shrinking and we're having to make those kind of difficult decisions." So, you know, I think I prefer this growth position over that one.
I might also add, I strongly suspect there will be some litigation out there addressing this situation where that new services tax applies statewide but is directed, I think it's to 85 counties. But, that's a separate issue entirely.
Well, we continue to hear that the issue of sales tax redistribution is going to be revisited again. I'm not... I mean, do any of y'all have a feeling on that?
Well, I think you're always going to have somebody not satisfied with what we did and going to try to change it. So, yeah, I think there'll probably be something. I don't know exactly who's going to bring that. I have an idea, but I'm not going to mention his name. In the Senate may address that again. So, yeah, I think we'll hear about it some more.
We absolutely will, and I'm just... If you're going to expand the sales tax, as long as we're, number one, cutting the income tax, cutting the corporate tax, you've got to do those two before I'll get in the room to discuss it with you. And then, I'm just not for it not going to the county that collects it from this point going forward because I think that's been a big problem with... And I know some of the poor counties needed help, and I know some of them, God forbid, were charging outrageous property taxes in the very counties where the people couldn't afford it because they couldn't build schools, they didn't have the money. And I understand that, but the redistribution gets a little out of control, and it's overall not wise. So, I don't look to support that going forward, if the redistribution at any point that needs to stay in the county where it's collected, you know?
Yeah, and what we ended up doing was sort of a compromise between the two extremes. And like I say, I doubt some people are going to be satisfied with that at all.
Right. Well, it's good to hear both of your positions, and that has been a very difficult one for, certainly for our association, because our association represents all 100 counties, and so we've got people on different sides of that issue. The third item that we have on the list for the short session is the support legislation, regulations, and funding that would preserve local option authority where needed to deploy community broadband systems to ensure community access to critical broadband services. That's one that has not been top of mind for Cabarrus County. We have not been in those situations, although there is a potential there that, in the future, that may become something we need to look at with some of our rural areas that it's not attractive to the commercial providers to provide that service in those areas. I was talking with Kasha earlier this morning, and I think about 47% of seniors, I can't remember, was it 47 do or 47 don't? I think it's 47% do have access to interse... So, internet and broadband service. So, you've got a little over half of them that do not. In years past, that would not have been as big an issue. Now, it's becoming more relevant as that's, you know, a lot of the materials that may have been available to them by other sources now are delivered in that fashion. Same thing with our schools and textbooks, same thing with the services that we offer at our libraries, and we were also talking about that earlier today. The resources, the online resources that we offer to people in Cabarrus County are tremendous, and we need to do a better job of making people aware of them. But, a lot of those senior populations are ones that who may not have the ability to physically visit the library. And so, this does become an issue for us in a number of different ways. And I'm sure that probably all three of you know more about the history of that and the discussions that have gone on. So, if you'd, you know, share your thoughts on that with us, we would appreciate it. Anybody can start.
Well, I think personally, this should remain as a private entity. I think you've got Time Warner Cable, and you've got two-dish networks, you have Windstream locally, and then you've got... Everybody's got these things attached to their hip now. It's got everything in the world on it. And like you said, in Cabarrus, it's not that big a deal. It's not that big a deal in probably most of the counties now where people do have access one way or another. And I think some of the gaps and holes are being covered, I mean, quickly. And we've seen some municipalities get into this, and it's not only a losing venture. I mean, some of them have just lost millions upon millions of dollars. You can't keep up with the technology. It changes rapidly, we all know that. Once you buy a smartphone, it's probably outdated, the new one's already there. So, it's changing, and it's going to get better. And there are other options that we can use that we don't use as far as government from one end to the other, but I'm not really... I'm not, right now, sold on governments getting more and more into this because the ones that I've seen that have gotten into it, boy, the taxpayers have just had to foot the bill, and it's not a good situation, just loses money. And I don't mean a little bit, I mean a lot, in most cases across the state. It just loses tons of money, and they're subsidizing it with other things like water and sewer funds, and then they let the water and sewer system go. It's just, I think it's left best left up to private industry.
Representative Pittman?
I agree pretty much with Carl. I have some mixed feelings, though, because while I generally don't like to see the government get involved in things that should be left to private enterprise, I like to see the government get out of the way and let private enterprises do its thing for the most part. At the same time, I can understand how you might look at this as providing service to the people. So, you know, I would probably come down on the side of let's keep it private enterprise, but I understand where you may be coming from to want to do this, so I'm willing to give it some more consideration.
Great. Thank you. Senator Hartzell?
I had to take it off mute again. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Quite candidly, the broadband is becoming an essential utility, particularly in order for rural areas to have any impact on an economy at all and their citizens. The availability of it is... citizens, the availability of it is, uh, absolutely essential. Um, the, but its use and availability arises primarily from constant, I mean, it's sort of an economies of scale issue. There are areas that do require some ability or some, that, that's how you got rural electric, you know, that's how you got rural telephone and some kind of assistance over time. Wi-Fi capabilities changed the, the hard line kind of a bit, but, um, all I know is, I had rural, I had better cell and, uh, Wi-Fi access in rural mountainous Guatemala than I've had in eastern Cabarrus County for years. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, so, so would it be safe to say that, that you're flexible on, on, on the
Absolutely.
This discussion? Great. Commissioners, did y'all have any comments on that? With that, uh, yes, Commissioners?
Just one brief thing, you know, we're in the 21st century and you have to consider that. It's not like when we first come on the grid and everybody wanted to be a part of it. Everybody is a part of it now. And as far as the broadband, internet service and all that, you mentioned that more than 50% of the people in Cabarrus County don't have it. Uh, well, a lot of that's to their own choosing, in my opinion. But, uh, I, I tend to agree with, with Representative Ford, you know, that it should stay, in my opinion, it should stay private. We got enough providers already, you know, with the DishNet and, and, uh, DirecTV and Windstream and lord knows who else, you know, is providing these services out there. And so, there's plenty of services available to the people. And I personally, in, you know, we haven't talked about this, but my own personal opinion is, is that it needs to, what needs to stay private, needs to stay private and where the government can intervene, it needs to. It's sort of, even though I served on the school board for 12 years, I'm still a strong advocate for charter schools, simply because it takes the burden off the taxpayer. And that's where I'm at. And I, I wouldn't want to see us put burden on taxpayers by providing a service that's optional. It's not like utilities that's necessary. Water, sewer.
Right.
Electricity, those are necessities. But internet, to me, is an option. And you either want it or you don't. If you don't want it, then you don't have to hook up. But the county shouldn't pay to provide a service just in case you decide you want it someday. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. Great, any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Let me just add that I agree with, um, everything I've heard here about, um, keeping it as much in the, in private hands as possible, because you have competition in private hands. You don't when you have just a governmental body taking care of it. And that, that makes a huge difference.
Right, right. Well, I think that, that concludes the three primary goals that we want to discuss. One of the things that I failed to mention earlier, Commissioner Poole apologizes she could not be with us this morning, her job situation did not allow her the flexibility to be here. And so, what we normally would start off with is, and if, if you, if you're agreeable, is just, just a little bit of an update from, from you folks on what you think the issues are gonna be in the short session and things that, um, that you think will be happening. Uh, and I intentionally put that on the, on the back end so we could get, get through these, these three issues before we ran out of time. So, you wanna start, Larry?
Well, some may agree or disagree, but you know that I've been leading the fight to get rid of Common Core, so I intend to continue in any way that we can on that. Not sure how much I can actually do in the short session. I guess I may have to be looking for something I can amend, you know, to do anything about that. You wouldn't believe how many teachers and even a principal came to me during early voting and even on Tuesday saying that they appreciated I was trying to get rid of that because it's just terrible for the kids and, you know, they just, they hate having to mess with it. Um, I do have a bill waiting over in the Senate, passed the House overwhelmingly, trying to protect, um, auto salvage and metal recycling dealers from being scammed. Currently, the way the law is, if they say buy an old car from somebody without a title and then somebody shows up with a title, they have to pay a second time for that and they could face some legal problems as well. And, um, my bill would protect them from somebody trying to scam them like that and make the person who sold it to them in the first place responsible and not the dealer. And, um, it's, it got held up in committee in the Senate, so I'm hoping we get that worked Senator Ruccio, I think, has indicated he's still gonna work on trying to reduce sales taxes, I mean, excuse me, income taxes further, which my goal personally is that we eventually, that probably won't happen while I'm there, it'd take longer than that. But, uh, I wanna see us eventually get rid of all personal and corporate income taxes. And, um, so, Senator Ruccio has indicated, even though he's not running again, that he's gonna try to work on that some more this short, short session. I'll certainly be in favor of whatever we can do about that. Um, I guess those are major things coming to mind at the moment.
Carl?
Carl? I keep hearing tax reform for sure, continuation. Like you said, Senator Ruccio, it's, it's his last year, so I don't know. I don't know. And he's a great guy.
He's gonna go for broke.
Yeah. Uh, he, he may go for broke, that's why I'm not so sure how short the short session will be because of that. Um, state employees getting a raise, and then we've got to discuss our insurance problems where the insurance premiums keep going through the roof and there are some that want to start charging the employees. And I'm like I was when I was a commissioner before, where we changed the policy for new hires coming in, then you know upfront if you've got to pay $10 a month or whatever. So, there, I think there's gonna be a discussion, uh, on that. And the only thing I would be for there is new hires coming in, and I think that's the only fair thing to do after you make a contract with someone. So, I, that's, that's been brought up. And there may or may not, I'm sure there'll be some local bills coming up, and I don't have a clue what they'll be coming from everyone. It ought to be interesting. I've already talked to Association of County Commissioners and, and they asked me, had I heard anything? And I, I had heard about the quarter cent sales tax and how some counties were abusing it and how some counties needed it and hadn't been able to get it. You're fortunate here in Emroan to, to have it and it really does help to pay for things and everybody helps get in on the fund. So, I think that, that discussion may be going forward. Other than that, it, right now, it looks like it's gonna be mostly about tax reform and, of course, like always in the short session, just tweaking the budget.
Thank you. Senator Hartzell?
He gotta unmute.
Unmute us. Now, he may have muted us permanently. Fletcher, are you still with us?
I'm having trouble with my mute button, but I'm, I'm back. Can you hear me now?
Well, yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry. Um, I think what Larry and Carl said is, is pretty accurate in terms of what's likely to occur. I mean, theoretically, the session is for budget modification and not much else. Uh, also, we thought we were gonna get, uh, move out pretty quickly, but some of the intervening events of the la, since the long session and litigation that has occurred relating to some of the matters, um, may, may make this session a little longer than anticipated. Um, and there's some other court decisions that might come down in the meantime, it restructures some situations, but, um, I, I don't, it shouldn't last long and it probably won't do a lot, but that can change with each passing day.
Well, we, we appreciate all three of you joining us this morning and this, this is, this discussion has been very helpful, uh, for us and certainly, uh, in relation to, to the state organization of county commissioners. And so, we appreciate you taking the time on a busy week, on a Friday morning, to, to be here at 8 o'clock. Is there anything any, any of you would like to add before we conclude?
I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Quick, just some lingering things that keep coming up every year, ratios or funding ratios for the lottery, you see any, any movement there?
Not really.
Of course, yeah.
Unfortunately.
We request that, you know, every year to go back to the normal.
I, I think it should go back to that, but unfortunately, I, it doesn't look like you can get the support or, and it, it seems to be, I don't, it, I just, I can't explain it. I wish I could, but I, I agree with you, it should go back to the way it was.
Now, are we currently getting about half what they originally?
Yeah, that's.
By statute indicated?
Well, it's a sore subject to me, cause you probably know, to me, there wouldn't be a lottery. But since we seem to be stuck with it, uh, it's Spode beef education, that's where the money should be going, not all these glitzy ads on TV and stuff. I mean, everybody knows we have a lottery, you know? You can't go buy gas. I mean, sometimes I have to wait behind three or four people getting lottery tickets before I can pay for my gas, you know, that sort of thing. Um, and so, I, I think all that glitzy ads needs to be, go away. That shouldn't even be there because everybody knows. But it certainly should be going to the schools, cause that's what it's supposed to be for. And so, I will support any effort to move in that direction or any effort to get rid of the lottery if it comes up too. I think, you know, going forward, this could be harder to do because Skip Stamm's not running again. So, I, he's been pretty big in trying to control that. And with him gone, I, I hope there's somebody to step in his shoes, you know, to do that.
Hey, one question I would have, I, I think originally 40% of the proceeds from the lottery were supposed to go back to counties for school, 42%. And I understand now it's closer to 20%. So, where are those? I mean, I know that, I thought the ads and the administration and those kind of things were coming out of the 60%. So, where's that 20% that's being diverted, being spent?
That's a good question. And, and one that we ask quite often, and, and we do hear about the university system and it going for scholarships programs there, um, which I got mixed emotions about that. I think they've got their own and plenty of funding. I think it should all go to K-12, but I can't fight that one by myself. Um, I, I agree, it needs to go back to where it was, and I think too much is being spent on administration. And like Larry said, on the ads, we, we at least changed with one bill a couple of years ago to put truth in the advertising, because there were some of the ads that were stretching the truth a little bit on what you could and couldn't win, like everybody was gonna become a millionaire, you know? So, um, I agree with Larry, we don't even need the ads, I don't think. And they're spending millions and millions of dollars on TV and radio ads across the state, much less billboards. Um, and I think that's a waste. It's like Larry said, everybody knows there's a lottery. You, you can't go in a convenience store or grocery store, hardly anywhere now, without seeing it or hearing about it. So, I, I think there are other things to get the money back to where it should be, but it's like Larry said too, once that ship is sailed, it's hard to get it back in the harbor.
Right.
So, my next one would be, you know, just, we haven't heard anything out of it, but it keeps popping up, that it may pop up, might come back up and for discussion, is moving transportation maintenance costs to counties, is that?
No.
Being discussed anymore, or is it dead?
It, it's not, it's never dead. Nothing's ever dead in Raleigh, just so you know, nothing's ever dead. But, uh, I would always fight against that, you know that. There's just no way I would ever be for that, cause I know what it would cost counties and in turn, the taxpayers. It would be ridiculous.
I go along with that.
Thank you. That's, that's big, you're exactly right, it would be a huge cost for the counties. And Fletcher, this may be one for you, is that, um, mental health, as we continue to move forward with that, uh, sort of restructuring of mental health, what, what's on the horizon for that process? Does it, is it gonna look the same or is it gonna continue to evolve?
My understanding is that Secretary Brazier is going to propose some changes toward the end of this month. It probably involve more mergers of some of the LME, MCOs, uh, down to three or four. I think there's seven now. Uh, I don't think it will adversely impact Cardinal, which provides United States and Cabarrus County. Um, but it's difficult to say. The issues associated with Medicaid and funding are always out there. Uh, there are, it's just a little too difficult to, at this point, but there, there will be another, what they call a SPA, a planned amendment submitted to deal with mental health and others, uh, in the immediate future. And it's, I won't say it's, it's still, um, I, I think things have stabilized for the most part.
Thank you.
But, um, in mental health, at least in our area, is probably going to be pretty stable. That's, I'm not saying through another parts of the state.
We did find out that when they were counting mental health beds statewide, that we weren't counting the beds at the VA hospitals. So, that was, that was something huge and we found out there was some availability there. And so, we've been trying to guide and direct veterans in that direction since they weren't even being counted and for obvious reasons, I guess. But that's good news and then there, there's gonna be some expansion of that this year. Hopefully, some of those, uh, new hospitals, new beds will be open soon.
I think that's important, you know, cause, uh, in, in some places, it might be different, but like, for instance, uh, if any of those beds are in Salisbury, uh, I very rarely hear complaints about Salisbury. You hear complaints about VA all over the place. But most of the people I know, I have a veteran in my church who's, you know, having problems with lung cancer and he's, he just sings their praises, most of the people. So, hopefully, that'd be true in mental health care as well up there. So, we're fortunate in this area to have that. So, uh, that's good to have found that and hope we make good use of it.
Frankly, the, the real issue comes down to how we address substance abuse, which is incorporated in mental health. And I'm not sure there're gonna be any changes in the immediate future, but I think there will be so.
Great, great, thanks. Thank you, Fletcher. No, Commissioner Minnick?
No, I was just gonna add that that, the last thing that he was referring to, the, um, substance abuse treatment, I think there's a big movement in the country to try to, instead of incarcerating people with these issues that have not committed any kind of crime, but, uh, other than abuse of themselves, that, that, to have them out of the jail system and take that funding for treatment for those individuals, that's, I, I see that as the trend and I, uh, I think it's the one that we should go after here as well.
Well, that's similar to, uh, the idea that we have of, um, victims of human trafficking, you know, the, say, girls and boys have been put up for prostitution, that sort of thing, treating them as a victim instead of perpetrator. And unfortunately, that will probably coincide with the drug stuff too, you know?
Right.
So, it all goes together, all goes together, yeah.
Well, we certainly appreciate the time that all of you have given us this morning. Um, I feel, I feel pretty accomplished that we're actually able to do this and be finished by 9 o'clock, because we enjoyed the opportunities that we have to talk with you folks. Uh, we could probably extend this on well beyond lunch. Um, and, and so, thank you for giving us that opportunity. We, we'll be up to visit you, um, during, during the short, short session, I think, most specifically, we have a trip early May, is that correct?
I think that's right. And we contacted you or your offices to, to, so that we can come by and visit you while we're there.
Right. Um, okay. You were not gesturing at me.
I was not. Please, mic us off.
Okay. Oh, mics, microphones, I, we frequently get called down for not turning our microphones on. But thank you again, we appreciate the, the, the chance you've given us this morning to discuss these things. Uh, please let us know how we can be of, of benefit to you and we certainly will, will be calling on you as well. And, um, we appreciate what you do for us all the time.
Thank you.
So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm glad one of you moved and the other one seconded, cause that's the only options we have. So, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.